Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for April 7th, 2015. Could I get a roll call, please?
Carolyn Smart, present.
Colin McNabb, present.
Sulecio, present. Call the meeting to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just an announcement that the meeting is being tape-recorded. You can watch it at your pleasure later on. Chairman's additions or deletions? Andy?
Nothing.
Okay, I have nothing. Town Administrator updates and reports.
Just a couple of quick ones. We talked a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago, about performance evaluations for employees. I just wanted to let the Board know that forms went out this week to departments, boards, and committees for them to do the evaluations. Ended up using the form that we've used in the past. I think if -- it may be worth a look in the future whether we need to update that, but it's pretty comparable to what's been used in other places. So I kept the form that we have. So we'll be getting those back in a number of weeks. And then just an update on the HRS compensation plan update, the salary schedule update. I talked to HRS recently. Due to their workload, it's going to be the second half of this month before we get that back. So I'm not sure that -- whether we'll have it back in time to even consider for town meeting, but it may be something that we can do in the fall or, you know, mid-year like we did last time, 2012.
It's probably going to depend on what we get back.
Yes, yep.
Maybe that's just as well. Things look like they are a little tight, anyway.
Right.
Board of Selectmen and announcements, updates, and reports. Anyone?
I have a quick one, just so my Board knows. Last Thursday, I met with Rec. Director M. Hoff, Alice Kennedy, Joan Landers, and Oscar Hill, and we had a very positive meeting. The summer rec. program is on schedule for us going to Cook. They also offered to give them a set fee versus having to pay progressively, which will save them money. And the best news is Joan is going to try and find M. office space, at least in the short term, so she can have a home to help with her programs. And they really want to have some future talks about possibly recreation being involved with the school and conducting before and after-school programs through the school. So it was a really, really positive meeting and might help us out in the short term with their needs.
So you met with the school and recreation folks?
Yep, last Thursday.
Oh, I wasn't aware you were going to be doing that.
Yeah, they asked -- they sent me an email and asked me to come, so I went, and it was just very positive and good news that, you know, especially, you know, when they came in last week and talked about the annex building. So I just wanted to share that with you. And that's all.
Okay. I have nothing. 2.1, Review Recommendation of Town Administrator Andy Sheehan to Appoint a Treasurer Collector. Been busy, huh?
We have been. We -- there's a memo in front of you tonight summarizing what the process that we've gone through. We didn't expect to be conducting another recruitment for a treasurer collector, but we posted the vacancy about a month ago, posted online at the Mass. Municipal Association and the Mass. Treasurer Collectors Association, and posted here at Town Hall. Received a total of 20 resumes, and Terry Walsh and Vicki Tidman and I interviewed a number of candidates last week, and we're unanimous in our recommendation that the Board appoint or hire Deborah Kristoff as the treasurer-collector. Deborah has a lot of experience, both in the treasury end of things and the collector end of things, both as individual capacities and in a combined capacity. So comes to us with a lot of experience, certified as a treasurer and as a collector by the MCTA, and should be able to hit the ground running and pick right up where Kate and Beth Ann leave off. So we're excited. We had a number of qualified candidates, and we're confident that Debbie will be a good fit for us here. So recommending that she start at grade T9, Step 4, and contingent on a pre-employment physical and getting bonded.
Andy, does -- is she familiar with VEDAR?
You know, I forgot to look that up. You asked me that earlier, and I apologize. She's got experience with a number of different platforms.
It does say in her resume, but I also put in my resume that I know how to use Microsoft Excel, and that's just a fabrication. Just kidding, just kidding. Kidding, folks.
You know what? I'm looking at her -- I'm looking at my notes from her interview, and she does know VEDAR.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
Is this what we call confession?
Said she's going to church on Saturday night.
Yes, I'll confess all my sins here rather than at church.
Oh, well. Andy, where does the 2970 per hour fit in terms of what we had planned?
It's one step above -- yeah, one step above where Kate Stacy is, so it's right in line.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So I would move that we appoint Deborah Kristoff as the Town Treasurer Collector at a grade T9, Step 4, salaried based on 40-hour work rate contingent upon her passing of pre-employment physical and getting bonded.
Second.
And with a six-month probationary period?
Correct. Second again.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
2.2, Vote to Reappoint Joseph Mizola as Veterans Service Officer for a Term from April 1st, 2015 to March 31st, 2016.
Madam Chair, I would move that we appoint -- reappoint Joseph Mizola as a Veterans Service Officer for a term effective April 1st, 2015 to March 31st, 2016.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
3.1, Executive Session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a, 1, to discuss complaints brought against public officers, employees, staff members, or individuals. I would need a roll call, please. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, part of the motion should also be whether you're planning to reconvene into open session.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Can somebody make the motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that the Board enter into executive session at 6:15 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a, 1, to discuss complaints brought against public officers, employees, staff members, or individuals, and to reconvene into open session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Carolyn Smart, aye.
Colin McNabb, aye.
Sulecio, aye.
We will be back. Okay, we're back. We are -- we just finished 3.1. 3.2, I think in light of everything else that we have, I'd like to make the suggestion that we put this off until the next meeting. Is that okay? All right. Do we need a motion or anything like that?
No. No, we can just put it to the next one.
Just that we have kind of full agenda, and that took a little bit longer than I thought.
Don't want to make these nice folks wait any longer.
No, no. 3.3, Review and Signed Warrant for the April 27th, 2015 Annual Town Election.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve and sign the warrant for the April 27th, 2015 Annual Town Election.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have it, Andy?
Yes.
3.4, Vote to Ratify and Disclose the Donation and License Agreement with Riverbank Development LLC Relative to 13 Elm Street. Andy?
Yeah, so in talking with one of the attorneys at Coplum and Page the other day, I was just giving him an update on how things turned out with this agreement, and it was his thought that the Board should publicly disclose the agreement. We voted it -- the Board voted it in executive session. There has been some rulings in the last year or so, mostly having to do with personal services contracts, like we have with the police chief and the fire chief and myself, and with collective bargaining agreements that we have with our union folks, talking about when a contract becomes official or becomes final. As a general rule, you have to either vote it in open session or disclose it in open session if it was voted in executive session. So he thought that the same is appropriate for this. It's not a labor contract, but it is a contract of a sort, so just a notice to the public disclosing the agreement.
Madam Chair, I would move that we ratify and disclose the donation license agreement with Riverbank Terrace, I mean Riverbank Development LLC relative to 13 Elm Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there's nothing to sign since it was already signed before.
Okay. 3.5, Review Discuss and Sign May 5th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
I don't know if you want to -- since you've got people here for the budget, if you want to tackle the budget first or if you want to do the town meeting warrant.
Can we already do this?
We did talk about the warrant, and
I thought nothing's changed.
Well, the only thing -- well, yeah, let's talk about -- I'd rather talk about budget first.
Okay. We do need to do the warrant tonight unless you're going to meet next week, but it should be quicker than the budget, but it might take a few minutes, so since you've got a roomful, maybe it's better to go to the budget.
We'll have a question on the budget that might relate to that, so hopefully better on doing that. You guys don't mind if we move that up, do you? I didn't think so. Okay. So budget. Andy, did you get questions from our Board?
I got a few. I've put a memorandum in front of you tonight. I just gave copies to the Finance Committee. There's a number of things, and it's sort of all -- all this stuff kind of bleeds together among the operating budget, the capital budget, appropriation articles at town meeting, and things like that. So the memorandum, and I know you're just receiving it tonight, and I apologize for that, but I got -- Carolyn had emailed me about the transfer out of capital stabilization for debt service, and that number, we had originally budgeted $375,000 for that, and that has changed slightly downward. It's down now to $335,000. And that's -- it's addressed also in the memo, or maybe it's addressed most clearly in the
Okay, so we're talking about the articles, then.
Well, again, it kind of bleeds over because it's an article to transfer money out of stabilization, but it's being used for -- essentially for the operating budget as well, so.
So that was one of your questions, Carolyn?
Yeah, so it's addressed on the top of Page 2. Starts Article 21.
Andy, on the Spalding Memorial Roof, did you find out why our debt schedule said 36 and they're courting you? Now they're courting you 98? Did you?
I think we ended up -- I think initially we were going to -- we were going to have another year. I think our last payment initially was going to be in '17. I think we accelerated that with some principal payments that we made a couple of years ago, so that's why that accelerated.
So this would actually be our last
This is our last one at 90, whatever I said it was.
98, 343. Yeah, because on the original debt schedule I got, it said our last payment was this year of 36, so that's why it was confusing.
Does that make sense to you now?
And then I'm assuming the Hawthorne Brook septic system, that's an interest payment, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you know what -- do we have a debt schedule that that's going to be at?
I don't know if I have that with me.
Do they know how much it even is going to be?
Yeah, that's what I was curious. It's done, I believe, so they should have
Oh, I didn't think it was finished.
Oh, maybe not. I could be wrong.
I think it's finished. I could be wrong, though.
It's pretty level for the run of the 10 years on the borrowing for Townsend. 55 roughly in the first couple of years. It declines a bit, ends up in the last year at just under $47,000. I can get you a copy of this if you'd like it.
Yeah, that would be great. I'll put it in my binder.
When does that actually start, then, next year?
That will start in -- the first principal and interest payment will be in '17.
So could I ask something else? Why are we pulling short-term interest payments out of capital stabilization? Why are we pulling that from the short-term interest? Why are we pulling that out of stabilization?
For which one?
The short-term interest payment on the septic system.
The $2,300?
Yeah.
Well, it's part of our assessment for North Middlesex, so it seemed cleaner to just do it like we're doing the debt with the Spalding.
That is how we've been doing it, right?
Yeah, we usually just
It's just that it's a smaller amount, so.
Usually interest comes out of short-term interest, but it doesn't matter.
So we okay on that? What else did we have, Andy?
I think that was it for questions.
Specific questions?
How long is that lead to stabilization?
In the -- did you get a copy, Andrea, of the packet that I gave you, that I gave to Nancy?
Yeah.
If you go to the first spreadsheet, the busy one, you might say.
Right.
So there's five columns of funding sources. So we're -- if I could put you on hold for a minute.
Oh, sorry. I just wondered.
No, I know, and again, it gets back to the comment I made at the beginning, that this is all sort of rolled in together. Can I take a couple of minutes to go through the memorandum?
Sure.
And sort of give you the big picture, and then you can ask specific stuff, and then we'll go from there. In terms of the articles, I'll just focus on the articles. Our snow and ice deficit this year is about $325,000. We ended town meeting with $422,000 in free cash, which we typically use to pay off our snow and ice deficit. That would pretty much clean out our free cash for the year. So a couple of things at play with respect to snow and ice this year. One, we've put in, and the Governor has put in to the President, a request for reimbursement for the effects of the harsh winter. We've put in a preliminary estimate of $200,000 in costs that we incurred. Of that, if the declaration gets approved and the funding gets approved, we would get back probably around $150,000. What I'm suggesting in terms of free cash, or excuse me, in terms of snow and ice, is that we pay $175,000 of the $325,000 out of free cash. We assume and hope that we're going to get $150,000 from FEMA in reimbursement. Also at play, the Governor and the Legislature have passed a law this year as part of a supplemental budget that allows communities to amortize this year's snow and ice over three years. Usually you have to pay it off at the next recap in the fall. They've allowed us to spread it out because it's such a big amount, and it's such a big amount in almost every community in Massachusetts. So even if worse comes to worse and we don't get the FEMA reimbursement, or we don't get it all, we can still spread the remaining $150,000 of snow and ice over the following two years. It's not the ideal practice that I'd like to follow, but there's -- it's a pretty good safety net that we have this year, and it's a very unusual circumstance that we face this year with this winter. I haven't forgotten you, Andrea, and I'll get to you in about 10 minutes. So that's the snow and ice piece. So I would suggest that we pay $175,000 from free cash, carry over the rest. Article 14 is a road improvement article. We did $150,000 last year. We did a five-year note to pay for that. We've done a lot in the last couple of years. We've got additional state funding in the last couple of years, $63,000 and change both last year and this year for what they're now calling the RAP program, Winter Recovery Program. We've also received more Chapter 90 money this year for general maintenance of roadways. We received a supplemental $212,000 in fiscal '15 on top of the $425,000 we normally get. It looks like we'll get the same amount, $638,000 in fiscal '16. So in light of the snow and ice impact and the desire to not drain our free cash and our stabilization, I would suggest that we do $100,000 this year for roadwork, and that that would come out of the capital stabilization. As an alternative, if you're concerned and you want to keep the momentum on roadwork, we could do a higher amount. I think if we're going to do a higher amount, we should do it as a borrowing, and so we should build that into the wording for the town meeting. Article 21, I talked about the transfer from stabilization to cover debt service. Article 22 is the operating budget, and I'll touch on that only briefly because we're going to talk about it in more depth. Last night, the North Middlesex School Committee voted to rescind their prior budget and recertify a new budget that reduced Townsend's assessment by about $207,000, which is -- we greatly appreciate. We were staring at a deficit of about $450,000 going into last night. So that brings our deficit to about 250. I'll leave it at that for now, and we'll come back to it. Article 23 is a supplemental appropriation for curbside collection. That would be for any of the add-ons above and beyond the baseline solid waste collection budget, which in the current year is $629,000. Article 24 is the Water Department. Enterprise just funds their operation out of their fees that they collect. Articles 26 and 27 have to do with the new fire station, Fire EMS station in West Townsend. 26 would be to purchase the land, 27, and that's $89,000. 27 would be to design and build the station. I'm suggesting that we authorize or request town meeting to authorize that we borrow to pay the costs of this project. Total project cost will be somewhere around $1 million or $1 million one, or just under $1 million one. Even at 30 years, I was initially thinking that we could manage this within our operating budget in terms of debt. It'll be a bit of a challenge, but I'm not sure that there's an appetite for a debt exclusion for this project, but that's something to consider as we talk about town meeting. And then finally, and I'm almost there, Andrea, is Article 28, the capital budget. We made a lot of headway over the last couple of years, especially last year, where we bundled a number of projects. We've got a number of projects sort of off the plate and funded. So what I'm proposing this year is $75,000 in projects from the capital stabilization account and another $108,000 in projects from other sources, the other sources being Fire EMS, ambulance receipts, and the Water Department retained earnings. So if you go to the second spreadsheet, the last sheet in this memo, you'll see the handful of projects that I'm recommending. Out of capital stabilization, I'm recommending streetlight purchase, a mower, replacement radios for the Police Department, and voting machines for the town clerk. And then out of the Fire EMS, ambulance receipts, monies for radio control alarm boxes, the second phase of that project, and then money out of the retained earnings for the Water Department for repairs to the Witch's Brook system and a new vehicle. So where does that leave Andrea? So with all of that, assuming that my math or my use of Excel is correct, that would bring free cash, which is now $422,000 and change, that would bring it down to $207,000, so we would use $207,000. Excuse me. It would allow us to carry over about $215,000 for next year. Capital stabilization, it would leave us with a balance of about $33,000. Again, it's $100,000 for roadwork, $335,000 for debt service, and $75,000 for general fund capital. That was the 20-minute answer to That was the 20-minute answer to a very simple question Andrea. And again, I, you know, understanding that the board is seeing this tonight for the first time, I expect that there'll be questions tonight or questions as we go forward and you get to digest this a little bit more and chew on this a little bit more.
The, the items that are listed as part of the 75,000. Are these items, things that capitals talked about?
Yes.
Is there anything that capitals talked about in addition to this?
Yeah, we, you submitted the worksheets to Andy, right?
You did, right at the meeting. You emailed them to him.
Yeah, so he has the worksheets. I apologize if they weren't forwarded over to you.
I don't think I got it, but.
Well, because we're still in discussions, because we were, you know, we knew that the, there's, there were so many variables in the budget.
Yeah.
That Andy had to wait to tell us what.
Okay.
He thought he could recommend, so.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to have, next week probably, we're going to have to have a capital meeting to vote on his recommendation and how we feel about it and all that sort of thing.
Okay. Basically, what happened is we put everything in order of priority, did the five-year plan, but we didn't know. Colin, as the chairman, wanted to go to the FinCom to see what they recommended in the board, to see what, Andy, to see what he recommended, so.
Okay.
I think those are the top priorities.
They almost ident, they almost match everything that we.
Yeah.
I think there might be a few, like a little bit of wiggle room, but we can, we'll discuss it in our next capital meeting.
I don't have it with me, so I apologize. Thank you. Where are we at Andy?
Um.
Yes Andrea.
I got, if, if.
Glasses.
Snow and ice came to 325,000, and we've been taking from free cash.
Where are you?
Snow and ice.
Snow, snow and ice. How, how do we end up with 215,000? I had to go for something considerable with that.
Oh.
Well, the 100,000 for roadwork comes out of capital.
Okay.
So in the snow and ice, you've got 175, I mean, in free cash, you've got 175 for snow and ice. You've got 8,000 for printer, copier, 3,500 for mail machine, 10,000 for training, 5,000 for conservation land, 1,500 for fine receipts, and 4,000 for the assessors' periodics.
Right.
Trying to do the math in my head and struggling.
No, no.
I think, I think I'm right. I think it's right.
I made a wrong assumption, I'm sorry. I had forgotten, I listened to what you said, but.
That's your first mistake. That'll get you in trouble every time Andrea.
I know, I know. But, and I hate to sound absolutely stupid, but since I've gone this far anyway. I still don't understand what we have left in stabilization.
Okay, so we're taking, are you looking at the first spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, so we're taking a hun, we started with 543,000 in capital stabilization.
Oh, no, not capital, just stabilization.
Oh, stabilization. Nothing, nothing is proposed at this point to come out of there.
Oh, oh.
We've, we've got 1,278 in stabilization right now.
Then I'm all set because.
Oh, you looked at the bottom and didn't see anything and thought we were draining it.
Yeah, well, you, no, but you had all these things listed, and you said stabilization.
I'm sorry.
So I just assumed that you meant the stabilization.
Yeah, usually we just talk about capital stabilization. So I drop the capital and just call it stabilization.
I'm sorry.
Basically, leaving the savings account intact.
The rainy day fund at this point is untouched.
That offsets our, we need that. Question or suggestion?
Yep.
Like I said, this is the first time we've seen it, and I'm very concerned about draining the capital stabilization account down to 33,000 because, as you know, we're relying on free cash to transfer in there because of debt service. So I'm wondering if the selectmen, and obviously, you know, this is the first time we've seen it, want to consider some of these purchases in the fall. So we wait and see what our free cash number is for this year.
I don't have any problem with, with that. That's why I asked the question, that I asked about where you were at with, with capital.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I'm looking at the 100,000 as well, you know, for road improvements. And I mean, I would definitely, I'd make that more if, if I could, but things being what they are right now.
We've got a.
I'd almost suggest that, that we, we look at what capital has and, and what you're recommending, and then go from there with up and down.
Scaring back some of the capital items.
Yeah, yeah.
Was there anything that had, what about the streetlight purchase? I know, was that continued on, any kind of grant or anything? As long as nothing has to be done by.
The, let's see.
Well, see, I'm not, I'm not suggesting though that, that we change what's on the list as much as hear back from capital.
Okay.
In terms of what capital thinks, and then we can look at that along with what is here and make some adjustments.
Yeah, I can, I can talk with the, with the departments about this. In terms of the streetlights, there's, there's potential additional money down the road if we do this, but it's really, it's kind of our own money. It would be another green communities grant.
Oh.
That we would use if, once we purchase the streetlights, not to get too deep into the weeds, but once we own the streetlights, we can then apply for a green communities grant to replace the ones that are there, the high-pressure sodiums, replace them with LEDs or something that's even more efficient than, than just us owning them. The, the repayment or the, you know, the payback period for the streetlights is a little over two years, I think. So if, you know, if we bump that out a little bit, I think that, I don't think that's the end of the world. I do want to talk to the chief about the radios, and I want to talk to Roger about the mower and see how critical those, those two items are.
See, I don't have any problem with those things. I'm actually thinking I'd, I'd reduce the, the highway, the road improvement.
The road, oh, okay, take that off.
And put that off until the fall.
Yeah. And that, yeah, and we, you know, we're, we're continuing on, on delinquencies and tax, tax titles and things like that, so we're hopeful that we'll get another, another slug of sort of unplanned money coming in, one-time funding that, that would come to us.
Colin?
I just want to make the point, we had such a rough winter, and some of our roads really got beaten up. I'd be hard-pressed to, to want to lower that, just me personally.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just have to look at it, that's all.
Sue, I do have to step out of the room for a moment. My, my mother called me, and she comes first. Excuse me.
Okay, that's, that's music to mother's ears.
So I, I'm certainly, I certainly don't want to lower anything for the roads, and it's not that I don't want to purchase it, but you know, I've been.
You're just looking for some flexibility.
Well, things that we can wait to the fall, wait to the fall, because I've been concerned about the free cash.
Well, let's.
And if we rate our count down to 33.
We'll continue the discussion then. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
So capital says to when you go.
Yeah, in, in terms of the free cash purchases, a couple of them are, are fairly critical. The two ti, town, town hall items, the printer, scanner, copier, we're, we're running short of a machine right now. That one is, is critical that we do. The mail machine is a, is sort of a continuing problem. The employee training, as much as I'd like to do that, if you want to kick that off to the fall, or lower that and then do something again later on, I think we could, we could do that. We could do the same with, with conservation as well. The other two are small, yeah.
All right. So we have some flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the assessors periodic have to stay, and, and what's the fire prevention fine receipts, what's that?
That's that other article, right?
Yeah, it's, it's one that Chief Klein brought to our attention a couple of years ago, where receipts that, that are generated by fire prevention fines, so if they go into a restaurant and they're not up to code and they, and they remain not up to code, like they don't have the correct fire suppression, or they don't have this correct vent or hood over the stove or something like that, they get a fine. Those fine receipts can be taken out of the general fund receipts and put into a dedicated fund that's used for, for training for fire EMS personnel. So, we did it a couple of years ago when Chief Klein was here. I think it was about $1,100. We were going to do it last year, and I don't think there was anything really collected in fiscal 13. So we've put it back on. I need to get a number from Tara to see exactly what that is, but it tends to be a small, a small amount.
So that revenue's already in our general fund, so just.
Correct. So it would be just coming out for cash.
Okay.
Lot to take in.
It is, yeah, and there's a, there's a lot to absorb. There's a lot of moving parts in not just the operating budget, in, in the entirety of our, of our financial system.
Just like home. All right, so you want to do the budget stuff?
I'm going to hold those two items until the fall.
Okay.
Just to keep us in order.
So Sue, we're just going to go through each department?
What kind of questions did we have Andy?
I didn't, I didn't get specific department budget questions. I know that in prior conversations, we've, we've had questions about the, some of the departments that had increases, and they're here tonight, council on aging, recreation commission, and the library, so. So we reached out and, and let them know that there might be a conversation involving them tonight, so.
Yeah.
I did have one question that I forgot to email Andy about. So it's in the, in the town clerk's budget. We talked about the longevity.
Oh, yeah.
And back when, when we had talked about the assistant town clerk and her longevity, we were kind of questioning whether it's supposed, they're supposed to get longevity as an elected official. So would I, the reason I voted in favor, because it was already voted on by time meeting.
You said you'd bring it up during budget time.
And I wanted to bring, yes.
I remember.
So I want to get clarification on that.
Sure.
If the board is okay with that.
That's fine. It's a question that I remember coming up before.
I remember, and I, and I remember saying.
We said, let's do it. Let's just do it, because the money's there.
Because it's already, the town's already voted for it, so.
With the next budget, yep.
Right, so under the, under the statute, for elected officials, and in terms of paid officials, the town clerk, I think is the last one we have since we converted the collector to, to an appointed position. But under the statute, elected officials, compensation is voted by town meeting. We have an, we have an article every year on the warrant that says to set the salaries of, about the salaries of elected officials, and it refers back to the operating budget. So elected officials are not subject to any union contract, they're not subject to the personnel policies and procedures manual. So an elected, elected official gets a salary, that official works whatever hours are necessary in order to perform the functions of the, of the position. If they have to work 50, they have to work 50, and if they can do it in 15.
It's a salaried position.
They can do it in 15. When they're sick, they just, they just don't come in. When they want to take vacation, they take vacation, and, and the, the salary is what the salary is. So, so they're, they're not entitled to, to, you know, sick time and vacation time and longevity and, and bereavement leave and those things. I had spoken at, at some point in the past with our labor council, Dave Jenkins, about this, and he, he confirmed that, confirmed that with me, so.
I mean, I know it's been in there in the past and it's been done in the past, but I think it's just that nobody ever.
I just want to make sure we're following the law.
Looked at it, so.
I have no problem with that. I'm sure she'd want you to.
Yeah.
Always take your longevity and incorporate it into our salary if it's.
As long as town meeting is okay with that.
Yeah, they got to approve it.
So what would you do? Take it out of that line item?
Yeah, we could talk to the town clerk about it. I don't, I don't have a problem.
I think if you're, I think if you're going to roll it into the salary, I think that, that to me is a little bit problematic.
I don't know.
Yeah, because it will be.
Yeah, because.
Right, because.
Yeah.
Right, you're going to, you're going to do that for everybody if you're going to do it.
If, if anything, I think that it needs to just maybe be separated out, and if, if the town meeting says yeah to that longevity for that.
How can you vote twice?
For that position, then let them, you know?
So, so even, right, so it, it might be worthwhile getting a, a formal written opinion on this if you'd like.
Well, my, my concern is this, okay? How do I say this without, there are other elected officials that are considered employees of the town.
Mm-hmm.
And if those elected officials stay in office through the graces of the, you know, the voters, I suppose, for more than five years, then would that not make them eligible as well? I mean, it, it's not.
Well, you could certainly make.
It, it's.
Right, you can make the argument.
My, my point is this, okay? I don't want to be opening up Pandora's Box here, okay? Because to me, myself, being an elected official, I knew when I took this job that it pays $2 a year, I think.
No, a dollar a year.
A dollar a year.
No, we zeroed it out then.
Trying to get that out.
Yeah, they zeroed it out, you get nothing.
I know I get nothing. I was hoping they owed it to me with interest.
No.
But, but, but seriously, there are some folks who have been in office for a very long time.
Mm-hmm.
To whom we have not given any kind of longevity. I would, yeah, I would check with council on that one, yes.
In regards to that problem, you have to be a part-timer over to get longevity. Anything under 20 hours is fractional, and you don't get longevity, so. But I would definitely want to find out.
I think, I can, I can say that.
That you put more.
We all thought, we all put in more than 20 hours.
It has to be paid hours, Colin.
I get, it's like, I figured out, it's like half a cent an hour.
Does it actually say that?
Half a cent.
No, it's not even that much.
I forget how the, how the personnel rules are worded.
Don't worry about it, no, I don't want to go down the rap.
I, do we need a motion to get a legal opinion?
Yeah, can we just?
Sure.
Please.
Clean.
I make a motion that we request a legal opinion regarding longevity pay for elected officials.
Second.
And specifically for one elected official.
Specifically for the town clerk.
Right. And what that might end up, what the ramifications of that would be from their standpoint, but. Yes Andrea.
The reason initially that the town clerk got it, years ago, we had town clerks for multiple years, but because it's a salaried position, the other elected officials don't get it and would never get longevity because they're not salaried officials.
That's right.
We need to vote?
We'll talk today.
Yeah, so could we have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you say?
Aye.
Oh.
Carol?
I didn't hear you say.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All three of us said yes, okay? Please.
Sue, can I make a suggestion? Because Karn has to leave.
Yes, I know.
Can we go over that, their budget?
I was going to say that. I really was.
Beat your teeth.
I know.
I got all the glory.
Where are we? It takes me a minute to find.
Yeah.
I know it's not in general government.
Keep going.
I know.
It's like the third from the last page. Board of Health at the top of the page. And then Council on Aging, that's where we go.
Can I ask a question? How much is, unless I sat down and figured out how much we backed out, and I'm not sure what you were planning on using other ambulance receipts or anything, how much is the budget projected over last year? I know it's 4.7%, but in actual dollars, right?
Oh, in actual dollars?
Because it's, it's top.
I didn't figure that out. We backed, we backed the Comcast money out and backed the ambulance receipts.
and backed the ambulance receipts, and now, is that good?
I'm sorry, what was your question? How much over last year's budget? I think our approved appropriated budget last year was-
What, Council on Aging?
No, the whole entire thing.
Can we focus on Council on Aging, just so that, we don't want out of time?
Does the Council on Aging want to say anything?
Well, I handed you a copy of the proposed budget, along with the letter that I wrote for the Finance Committee initially, explaining that it is, um, there is a difference, a total difference on the wages of 7.63% because, um, because in December, the Council on Aging voted to increase my hours to 40 hours a week. Um, so that's a 12% increase in hours. And also, they took off the temp health line item, and there's no longevity anymore. And then, in the FY15 budget, there's a 10-hour-a-week position for an outreach coordinator that is not filled at this time, and, uh, but we would like to fill it. Um, in FY15 budget, it was listed at 9.70 an hour. I think that's because initially, it was paid for by a grant. And according to our wage matrix, uh, we start people at $12.10.
All right. So, we're talking 12, I'm sorry, $12.10 times 10 hours a week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, how do you add that up for me?
Well, the, um, the wage for the outreach coordinator would be $6,292.
For the year.
For a whole year.
Yeah.
How much is it again?
$6,292. So, it's, it's, it's a 24% increase, but that's because the FY15 hourly rate was $9.70.
Yeah, that's sometimes what makes it hard to follow these, is, is everything gets lumped into a line, and you can't say, figure out what piece of it goes with which.
Yeah. So, I gave you the labor worksheet as well, so that you can see that.
Oh, good.
Hate when I leave my abacus at home.
All the other supplies and everything are level funded.
So, essentially, you're asking for a little under $6,000 more?
Okay.
Has the FinCom, was there-
Lot of money.
Was there a reaction to the increase?
I didn't, I didn't hear if they voted to recommend or not recommend, but I felt like we got a positive response from the FinCom.
Andrea?
We listened to their presentation.
Yeah. Have you voted on anything yet?
We've not discussed it.
Okay.
And we've not taken a vote on any.
Okay.
Have you voted, Sue, do you mind if I ask? Andrea, have you voted on any departments?
No.
No, you haven't voted on anything?
No.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That makes sense. That makes sense to me now. Thank you. What's next?
Uh, you've got Rec and Library here, um, both in the same area in the budget.
Who was here first?
Rec was. Now serving number two?
Serving number two? Yes.
Want to come up?
So, Rec is on the next page.
That makes it easy.
I don't have that last page in the budget. That's why I was asking. It goes right to water from the services.
Really?
Yeah. I would've figured it out myself. I didn't want to make you do it, but.
No.
Do you know the debt, do you know the debt page?
Here, do you want to look at mine? That's okay. I can get it afterwards. I'll follow it.
Yeah. I did a quick calc.
No problem.
I can talk about when we get, uh, finish with the appointments.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
We didn't prepare any kind of spreadsheets or anything. We've been here before discussing things, and we're looking for the town to support recreation, to pay our director's salary. Um, so, we've been, have not been funded for five years or so, and we're looking for $20,000 to pay her part-time salary. And it doesn't cover her full salary, because we're gonna increase her hours to 19.
How much do you have in your revolving fund?
I have that.
Do you ever, do you have to dip in, do you have to dip into that to cover your expenses, or are you?
Some expenses, and then that pays for salary. Yeah.
No, what I mean is, is are you having to dip into the savings? Like, are you, are you, is your programming saving, um, earning enough money to pay for all your expenses? Or are you having to take money out of your, the, the, what you've saved up over the years?
Oh, yeah. All right. So, so we have 69, 536, and 30 cents is what's, what's in our balance.
I'm gonna ask you to share, because I-
As of right now. And every year, we, um...
Okay. What I did was I updated the little worksheet that I did last year, um, which demonstrates what we started with back in 2009. Um, it increased, increased, and then came down. And I think I remember us talking about, yeah, that's because you, you know, you had the director was different, and the salary was different. But, um, I was curious to know what we were looking like. And it looks like this past year, we did a little bit better in that it almost broke even, what went out and what came in. That's, that's a good start. That's a good start. But when I saw that you were asking for the 20,000 to come out of the operating budget, I guess my question frankly is, what's different this year? Why would we, you know, we talked about this last year as well.
Mm-hmm.
Why would we amend that this year and, and not last year? What's changed?
Well, when we were here last year, and you talked about how we were not being fiscally responsible and whatnot, which we, difference of opinion there, under your request, we increased our costs for the summer program. It's kind of what you were talking about. We lost half of our kids because of that. So, we only made about $2,200 last year on the summer program, um, which is, that, that's our biggest, biggest program, and we shouldn't be losing that kind of money, or not making that much money on it, um, and whatnot. So, we're, we're trying something a little bit different this year to offer discounts, and if they sign up earlier, we're keeping the rates the same, because we can't afford to lose another half of our population for coming to that summer program. We're trying to, to generate funds and whatnot for the potential for that bank building, to use that, um, and things. And quite frankly, that, we feel that the town needs to support recreation. You did it one time. Times were tough. You asked us to, to back away. You said that we would, uh, Finance told us that they would give us back our money at, you know, in a couple of years' time. It's been over five years, and it hasn't happened.
Yeah. We couldn't find any record of that happening. We talked about that last year. But-
Yes, I know.
It's not that I don't support recreation, but we're looking at a very, very tight budget. And breaking even for next year, you would assume that you're still gonna have close to $70,000. What it sounds like you're saying, well, ending balance from last year is 69, okay? So, I'm assuming that's going to stay consistent, because-
Of the report, was, does it say 69?
69.5, yeah.
69, 536. Um, I understand that you're interested in having a building dedicated to recreation.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a new conversation. That's been going on in town for years. Okay? I also think, and this is just my opinion, but I also think that that kind of a decision is a decision that the town meeting needs to make for that purpose. Okay? So, that, let's say it turns out that the annex is a good option for you. Okay? Let's say that everything works out, and let's say that it comes out to, you know, $200,000 to, to renovate it or to, to fix it, so that you could use it. It would be usable for you. And I'm just throwing that number out. I have no idea how much it would be. My feeling is that that $200,000 needs to come out of the town. Okay? That that would be a separate article, and that people in town would need to vote on whether or not that is a priority for them. Not out of your operating budget. That's really what this is. This is your revolving fund operating budget. And, and I think that the building part of it needs to be separate. Certainly, if we were thinking of the same thing from our standpoint, we keep it separate from the operating budget. And I think it deserves to go to town meeting. So, um, that's, that's my major concern, because one of the things you said was, you're hoping to save some money here to be able to put toward a building.
Well, we, we have a building fund also, and we haven't really put any money into it lately, well, in a while, because, because of deficits, and, and now we had no place where we were looking at. So, now with the annex building, we can start putting money back into that.
Colin?
Again, this is a, just kind of almost echoing what, what Sue said. It's just such a tight year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm, you know, all the departments, they're asking for increases. I'm, I'm kind of going, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do with this? I'm, I'd be very curious with the Finance Committee, how they feel about this. When, uh-
I just feel like it's muddying it up.
I don't, Andrea, I don't mean to keep picking on you, but when is, when is the Finance Committee going to be making their voting on the different increases?
We're meeting with the, um, police chief on Friday, or Thursday, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, that doesn't sound like a fun Friday night.
This Thursday. And, um, uh, oh, no, he always presents very, very well, um, at meetings. Um, and I assume that will be part of the business of the meeting afterwards. I, I don't know. It depends on how, how late it is, if we have a quorum, any number of things.
I guess a couple, I just, I, I need to make this comment, because this is really bothering me. We're asking for $20,000. We're not asking for the her full salary. Um, a couple of weeks ago, at one of the meetings, we were talking budget, or I'm not exactly sure what it was, but one of the comments that you had made was, it, it was over discussion of $40,000. And your comment was, it's only a drop in the bucket. So, if that's the case for whatever that issue was, what, why are we, forget Rec. It, it doesn't make sense to me that you won't-
Because you already have 60, over $60,000. Okay? If you, if that was zero, and you were coming to us and saying, if we don't have the $20,000, we can't afford our, our person. That's not what, what you're saying.
If you look from 2009 to 2014, the ending balance has decreased every single year.
Yes. Mm-hmm. And what that says to me, I mean, right now, in, in, you actually were, were pretty much breaking even. If you look at that ratio, okay, you were, you were breaking even, and then something happened, and it started not going that way. I think the other thing is, to be honest with you, um, I mean, my husband was on one of the first Rec commissions. Okay? So, I am not saying I don't believe in recreation. He would come down from, come up from his grave and, and get very angry at me if I did that. Um, and he was on the Recreation Commission for quite a while, and they did a lot of sports programs, and the kids got into it, and they loved it, and it was wonderful. But this was back quite a while ago. I don't know if our society has changed, and I don't know if this is a reflection of our society changing. There's only so much discretionary income that families have. And what I'm thinking is, you know what? If, if their kids are busy going to gymnastics or paid sports programs or whatever, uh, maybe there's just not enough for them to do this, or maybe they're just busy.
What about the kids that don't do sports? You're focusing on sports. There's so many kids that don't.
No, I, I understand. I understand. Like I said, my husband did it. Okay? They had a director that did the summer programs. But I don't know why it's changing. It's not really up to me to say why it's changing. It's really, it's really-
Excuse me. Actually, this is, uh, it changed because the director, I, you know-
I remember you saying that last year.
So, that's why. And you can see the difference with Emmy. She has really dedicated herself to try to, you know, find it, reach out and find out what the community is interested in. And so, we did have a transition year, but now that she's, uh, you know, more focused and has found out what, uh-
I, it's not that I don't support recreation. I do support what you do. Okay? My, my grandson went to your summer program. Um-
I went to their summer program?
I, well, no, I mean, just recently.
It wasn't actually that long.
Like, you know, the last year or so. But you've got to separate it out. How can we say we're gonna set aside $20,000 from the town's operating budget for recreation when you're saying you want to take some of this money and put it in to something for the building?
No, we can't do that. We know we can't do that. It has to be a separate account.
But you said in, into that building fund, I thought.
We could channel the funds, incoming funds.
But that's, that's what I'm getting at. Okay? I keep them separate, and it's too tight this year. Carolyn?
So, like Sue, as you said, we just discovered, or I just discovered last week, that we have a pretty big deficit. So, I'm, I'm definitely support, and I have said it before, I understand the need, but I have to look at the bottom line before I tell, you know, and figure out how we can balance this year. But for recreation's purposes, um, like I said, we had a very good meeting, and one of the things that were with the school, one of the things that were discussed was, um, before and after school.
Program.
Program. That's going to be a revenue maker for recreation, but they're gonna have to invest some money into their director. She's only 15 hours a week, and she has no tools. She has no computer. She has no phone. So, they're gonna have to make an investment into their director in, in a way that she can have additional hours or the tools she needs in order to make a program like that work. And if that program works, then recreation won't need the funds, funds from us. So, I, I want to try and find a way to at least support them in some manner, um, to be successful long-term.
Colin?
I, I had a couple of points. It's a little off topic. I was just curious, um, how come you invited one selectman to the meeting with the school, and not all three of us?
Uh, in dis, in discussion with some of the, um, um, programs and issues and things that we were having, we thought that, um, we didn't want to go to the school saying that, you know, we've got the board of selectmen coming with us and stuff like that. So.
Because I personally am very interested in this, just because I have nieces and nephews that are, that go to summer rec and are involved. So, I would have liked to have participated myself.
I mean, I, I don't want to belabor that, but the only comment I have to make, and Carolyn, I appreciate you having gone and, and tried to help them out. But, um, it's, it's very important that, that we as a board at least know about that happening, so that we could say, Carolyn, you're our representative there. Because to tell you the truth, anything that one of us says individually is not, it's, it's not part of the board.
Carolyn wasn't going.
I wasn't, I wasn't there as a board of selectmen member, or, or anything else. It was a few days before, and they asked me to phone to go, and I said, "That's fine."
Please, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you were. I'm not saying that you-
I didn't speak as a selectman or anything else.
I'm not saying that you were. I'm saying people can perceive that. Okay?
Well, the other-
So, that, that's, that's my concern.
That was just-
Besides, I want to know what's going on.
That's why I told you tonight, under my updates and reports.
Right. But like I said, I would have, I would have liked to have participated myself.
I get a lot of invites from a lot of different departments in town to come in and talk to them. So, unless we can find a way how I'm supposed to channel that information to you outside of a meeting, because I get invites to, to, to go with people all the time and talk to them. And I try and always bring it back to the board. Um, so, I don't know.
Anyways, the, this, the other comment I want to make is that I think that it's this, and again, any of the increases, you know, we're gonna, you know, everyone's gonna argue the case, and then we're gonna have to talk about it and-
Yeah.
See, you know, work with the FinCom. So, I think- See, you know, work with the FinCom, so I think that rec's done a good job and they've made their case.
Recreation's high on my list of what I care about in town. I just, I don't know, I mean, twenty thousand dollars is, is a significant amount of money.
I think, uh, I mean, one of the big problems to add on to what Carolyn was saying was, you know, we're, right now, well, the rec commission is, we're running ourselves kinda like a business. You know, and two of the things you need for a business is, is resources and funding or investment backers.
Capital.
Exactly, and we're lacking in both. And, uh, in, you know, the past few years, we've been scraping by. We haven't been able to take that big risk to actually, you know, see some growth or anything like that. We're just kind of, you know, being very conservative with the programming and things like that, just so we can scrape by to the next year. We would like to, to see a growth pattern to the, to the commission. And in that case, if we do see a growth pattern, you know, the whole recreation program grows and maybe the town looks more attractive to outsiders possibly moving in. And then that brings more revenue to the town and, and it all kinda goes around in a circle. And that's what we're looking to do.
Okay. I don't know, when, when are we gonna vote on how we feel about things, just in case anybody asks?
Sometime in the next, oh, um, three weeks or less, yeah. I mean, you could, you could vote tonight on items if you want to, or, um, I think, I think we need to move fairly quickly.
I'm, I, I wanna hear everything and I wanna hear what the FinCom has to say.
Yeah. So, um.
Can I just ask one question though? Should you, I know you're going to, when you deny, deny recreation, does it come out of the budget? The operating budget, then? So when, when it goes to town meeting, recreation is not there, or is zeroed?
It'll say in the department request, it'll put what you've requested, and then it'll say FinCom recommended and, or Board of Selectmen recommended, or however we're doing it this year. So it'll still be there, but it won't be in what's recommended. You'll have two, two calls like you did last year, this will be what you asked for. And this will be what we're recommending, so.
Okay, so if you go over the budget as a whole, or just do it like through departments, I guess I'm, I'm not, do I need to do another article? Is, I guess what I'm asking.
Well, the, the budget is broken down into, into functional areas. So we do police and fire all, all together as public safety, we do public education together. So recreation is within the culture and recreation, uh, functional area of the budget. As Carolyn said, what, what is presented to town meeting, if the board votes not to support the funding request, it will be just, it'll be zeroed out there. If, if you wanted to, you know, at any point during the, at any point, somebody can make a motion to amend an article on the floor. And so that's, that's what would need to happen in order, in order for that funding to go back in.
Okay.
The warrant, the warrant is closed and it, and it wouldn't be appropriate to do a, an operating budget as a standalone, a standalone warrant article anyways.
Okay.
Now, that's different than if you went, if you go forward with a building or something. I mean, that's, that is capital. Okay, so that, that would be outside of the operating budget.
Okay.
And somebody can help you with that if, if we get to that point.
Not F when, when we get to that point, positive thinking.
It's just, it's a bad, it's a bad year, it's a really bad year, we still have a deficit because of the school.
We understand that, but last time we came in front of the board, we wanted to be put back, you know, have some support from the town. And at the time, you, you didn't feel like we presented ourselves well enough. So we all went back to the drawing board and we have been discussing this for quite some time. And so that's why we came back with this, with supporting Emmy's salary. So that at least it was a specific amount of money, it was, it was, you know, earmarked for somebody's salary who does work for the town and, and be paid for by the town instead of by our fundraising. So that's why we came back with that, and that's why it's vital. You know, and I do believe you have to invest money to make money, you know? And she is a great investment for this town and for the future of our children, which will be this town in a few years.
Yeah, that's, that's not in question.
Yeah. So that's why I'm so, feel so strong on all that.
Yeah, we just think we provide a service to the town and.
That's vital.
We'd like to keep it going.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and good luck.
With the budget, I know.
You could stay and help.
Wow, I might do that in a few years.
Now, survey number three. At the deli?
More statistics.
You know, I love statistics. You want one?
Sure, I don't wanna be left out.
Okay, I'll say her.
So what's this, Big Brother is watching you?
Who be?
No.
Oh.
The statistics, doing a very good job.
Well, I have to report to the state every year, you know, all of the statistics here. So that was fairly easy to get, because I have to keep track of all this all year long. And the after-school statistics, we stand with a clipboard and count the children as they come in. Because, you know, it's, it was just getting to be too, too crazy after school to, and we wanted to find out how many kids were actually coming over after school, so that seemed to be the best way to do it. We greet them, say hello, they think we know all their names.
I've been there when they come, it was scary.
Yes, when they come, we make coffee at two. Take it out at two thirty.
It's like one of those ten plagues of Egypt.
They, they flock from Hawthorne Brook, I'll be there picking up my grandson and they.
Today it was boy-heavy, we had a lot of boys today, there's a little rumble outside my office, but, you know.
West Side Story.
Kind of. It's great. Okay, so what, what, um, what do you, what do you wanna know?
Why do you want the money?
Well, you're asking for an increase, I'd just like you to break down what the increases, please.
Sue, if you mind, I just, it ends up being about a twelve point two, seven percent increase. And it just, again, same thing with the other departments, it's a tough year.
Right. Well, the major difference between the two budgets, between last year and this year, is in the salary category. And what we're looking for is an equitable adjustment. The increases are for the director and also the children's room director in hours. Presently, our director is paid for thirty-two hours. And the children's room is paid for.
Thirty.
Thirty hours. It's an interesting thing, when you look at the staffing of the library, the library is open forty hours a week. And we have a director who supervises a senior tech who actually gets paid for more hours than our director does.
Okay, I have a little.
So we've noticed this inequity for quite some time, and the board of trustees have asked for tracking to record the number of hours that are actually, actually worked. And for both the director and the children's room, it's a forty-hour-a-week position in order for them to do everything that they need to do for the, the daily working of the library. You can see by the statistics, the increase, not just in the amount of books that are in and out, but the increase in programs, the increase in attendance. And that's a major difference in our budget.
Sue?
Yes.
I remember, this is going back a few years when I was still on the FinCom, when I met with, with you and, and Stacy, about having, hiring somebody just for that after-school period? Is that part of this at all, or it's just the current employees?
Current employees.
They would give the current employees, I would say from about two fifteen until about four thirty, sometimes a little bit later. It's, 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 it's all hands on deck, even myself, I don't, I, you know, there's no.
I've seen it, you have heard the children.
Yeah, yeah, so what this would do would be, I, what I do now is I just come in early before, you know, I come in a couple of hours before we open and I can get everything done before we open, and it's quiet. You know, that's generally why, you know, I get there sometimes at seven o'clock in the morning, sometimes eight o'clock, I get everything done. Because I know, you know, halfway through the day, you know, it's, it's, it's chaotic. And, um, you know, we go over there and, and, you know, try to do, um, you know, programming, and, yeah, yeah.
I make a lot of jokes about, you know, hurting children, that sort of thing, but.
Right, right.
It is, it's, it's great that the library's there for the kids to go to, because it's better they're there, you know, than, you know, hanging around on, on the town common or something like that.
And we've been trying to, um.
Stuff like I used to do when I was a kid.
And I've been rearranging, you know, you know, the staff members so that people, you know, there's more people there after school so that we could possibly do some after-school activities and, you know, all of that. But, you know, again, you know, when you're rearranging the hours, you know, what ends up happening is Molly and I both consistently end up coming in and getting work done before we open, or, you know, she stays a lot, you know, actually, we both stay. You know, your sister go home at six and maybe you go home at seven thirty, so it's, um.
Yeah, please understand that the hours are being worked. We're just requesting that they be paid for the hours that they're actually working. And we've been very blessed to have such a dedicated staff, such a dedicated director and, and children's room, and all of the staff at the library, that they're willing to go the extra mile. But to do it year after year is asking a bit much.
I was gonna say.
Sorry, I just wanted to piggyback onto what you said, and that is that since the new library opened, our stats have steadily gone up significantly year after year, and that's trackable. And we have not increased our staff, and in fact, we have worked very hard to make sure that we have covered sick time and vacation time and helping to, to really, just really get good coverage across the library. But every single staff member is stretched to their, their absolute end, and, you know.
It seems like you're going beyond the stretching to the end, because you're.
People are gonna get tired of doing that without being compensated, yeah. And we have a really great thing going, so it would be great if we could compensate people.
Yeah, I figured it out, it ends up being thirty-two thousand, well, almost thirty-three thousand dollars more.
And part of that is, oh, sorry, part of it, of the entire request, a little bit is due to the fact that the state requires us to do the formula every year, so there's a certain amount that we have to pay for the materials. And Karen Savage, she is eligible for longevity, so, you know, little, little bits of it.
Right, I mean, that's just a consequence.
But for the bulk of it was the staffing, yeah, yeah.
Sue, I just am curious, do you get a lot, do you, if somebody, it's only town residents, it's, it's free for, right? Or is that to people from, like?
Well, you, we have people from New Hampshire and, and also other Massachusetts municipalities, you know, can use our library. So it's all in the statistics here, so the circulation to residents of other towns is, it's gone up a hundred and eighty-six percent. We do charge New Hampshire patrons, do pay, and that goes back to the general fund, they pay, I think it's ten dollars for an individual membership to a library per year.
I vaguely remember us talking about this a couple of years ago.
And it's twenty-five dollars for a family member per year, so that all goes back into the general fund with the fines.
Okay, I was just curious, I mean.
And because of the interlibrary loan and the sharing, anybody who pays Massachusetts taxes can get a library card. But they do, they do count that, you know, when they're, when we get our state aid grant, they do, they do take that into consideration. We get more money from the state aid grant because we're serving residents from other towns. We get a lot of, we get a lot of people from the surrounding towns as well, there's a lot of.
That's a wonderful library, why wouldn't you?
Yeah. I'm sorry, the, the director works how many hours?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
I think Colin did, yeah. Original packet. You can keep that.
Karen's twenty-five.
Karen's twenty-five hours.
So in that, in that line item, is the base increase that we've budgeted, asked everybody to budget, which is a two and a half percent increase?
Right.
Okay, plus the, the incremental hours, correct?
Right.
Okay, because for a minute I couldn't figure out if it's adding one day, why isn't the, in, the, the percentage twenty-five percent?
Yeah, and I'm not sure why it's.
Or twenty percent, but, but that's, that would explain it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know if we want it to be, you know, done individually or if we wanna stay at.
Well, I mean, because it's all these little line items in the budget, it just, it's not as pretty as it is when you do your own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and that's really, that's really, I think, why we asked for folks to come, because it's, it's important to break those down. How much of it is this and how much of it is that? Because if you look at the difference, it's twelve nine, twelve nine fifty-one. But that's, part of that is the base increase as well.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right, so. Any other? No?
I don't know any other questions?
God, I was ready to answer a lot of questions.
What questions did you anticipate?
I don't know anything, I just brought all kinds of papers, but I'm good.
Well, we're here all night, so.
Notes and whatnot, but that's fine, you can call me later if you have more questions.
What do you think we should ask?
Oh, I have no idea, I just made notes about longevity and.
Always be prepared.
I'm like a girl scout.
I've noticed that.
Yes.
No, uh, everything, I mean, all that aside, really, I, I'm serious. Is there anything else that, besides what we've asked and what you've shown us, that you think we would want to know?
It's just a busy, busy place, you know, and, oh, there is one more thing that we have, that I did wanna point out that we've taken over. Since the meeting hall coordinator is no more and the meeting hall committee is no more, we have taken over the scheduling of the meeting hall at the library, which is working beautifully as a system. But it is, it is extra work that, you know, of course, now we're doing, but it is working fantastically. It's, it's a good, it's, it's, it's very smooth. So that is something else you should be aware of, it's a little more work, but it's, it's really a nice, it's working nicely, I'm happy with it.
And one of these days when I learn to read, I'll start using the library.
All your nieces and nephews can read to you, maybe they can teach you, Colin. They, they, when they get their driver's licenses, they can bring you.
They can drive me around.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, since you gave us the opportunity to speak, let me take this opportunity to publicly say that Townsend's really blessed not only to have the facility that we have, but to have the staff and the dedication that this staff has. Truly, we're very blessed.
Based on personal observation, I would agree with you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, what else?
Hey, we're not done yet.
Watch, watch.
Good check for the evening.
I answered to a higher authority.
Smart man. Do we have any other things that we wanna pull out? There's one that I am thinking about, I guess it came up in our reading last week in, in a way. Do we know anything more about trash collection and, I mean, it's kinda like the elephant in the room.
Yeah.
At this point, because what's going on and what are we looking at for costs is my concern.
Sure. The, the, the request for proposals were at a deadline of a week ago Monday, I think it was. And we did receive four proposals, I haven't looked at them. I don't know, I was told who they came from, but I forgot who it was. It's, the review committee is, is looking at those now. Tessa David from Mastos is compiling all of the, the data. It was a, it was, if you, if you remember the RFP and the. It was, if you remember the RFP and the bid form, it was a fairly complex price sheet. There was the base price, the tipping fee and the collection cost, and then there was essentially a menu of other services.
Yeah, it was like an à la carte, kind of.
Yeah. So they're going through that to figure out what, where they stand. I think, I think the general fund line is probably going to decline from what they, what the Board of Health had requested. They had...
That sounds good. I like that word. Colin?
Sue, just, it relates to this. You know, I know when we designated Andy as our representative, he was not exactly pleased about it just because of his time commitment. So I actually looked at my schedule and depending on, as long as they have it on, we can do it on certain nights, I can take over that, so...
I personally don't know why they wouldn't accept our... I offered to do it too.
I know you do. But I mean, if the board is willing to allow me to.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's honestly a part of me that says I don't understand the nonsense with, and I will call it nonsense, with...
Why is there something going on?
Well, the nonsense is that I have heard that they simply don't want Andy involved in anything, and I don't think that's a good thing. I just, I don't understand why one of our elected boards would not want our town administrator to work with them on something as big as this. And to be honest with you, I just, I don't understand it. So I'm not real pleased about it. I mean, we offered the help of...
I'm not...
It doesn't have anything to do with you or you, it just, it's like, wait a minute, you know? Andy was involved in the last negotiation thing that they did, the last contract that they did. He worked with Tessa on that. I don't understand, is all I'm saying, so it kind of annoys me a bit.
Sue, I'm not speaking to that at all. I'm speaking to the fact that I originally didn't think I could do it because, you know, I work full-time. I am involved in a lot of different things.
No, I know.
But I looked at my schedule and I can make it work, so...
Okay, well, whatever.
Okay.
What's wrong? I don't know, nothing's wrong.
Carolyn, you yourself said to me that public works is my area this year, so...
So do we need to vote on Colin going as our representative?
Yeah.
So remove that Colin McNabb go to become part of the RFP subcommittee review? What are we calling it? What did we call it last week?
Be our representative on the review committee.
I don't know what they're calling it.
Colin McNabb be our representative on the RFP review.
Review, okay. Second, Colin? Are you seconding it?
Can I second it because it's involving me?
It doesn't matter.
Second.
You have no financial interest in this.
All right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you could just work it out with them.
Yep.
Sue, just one thing before we move off of trash. Before we stop the trash talking.
Yeah.
So the Board of Health requested six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand for curbside this year. That's up from six-twenty-nine.
That's show six-forty-eight on mine.
Current year.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Six-sixty-three.
Oh, that's the, that's the subtotal for the whole thing. If you go up a little bit, it's a single line item, yeah.
Six-forty-four.
Six-forty-four. So I think that that's likely to go down. I was looking at our year-to-date numbers and we look to be trending pretty well for the year. So I'm hopeful that we can drop it below the six-forty-four and even drop it below the six-twenty-nine, that our, that our base collection, essentially the services that we provide now, we can provide for less than, less than we've budgeted for this year. So we'll get a better sense of that in the next week or two. We'll look when the next bill comes in, see where we are, so...
Does that mean our recycling is picking up?
Yeah, it probably means that our, that our trash collection is, trash tonnage is dropping and our recycling is picking up.
Which we were hoping.
We were hoping for that. And we've seen that when you look over a number of years, there's a steady downward trend. So, and we think that's going to continue. At some point, we'll bottom out, but I don't think we're there yet, so. But, so that, that number might change, and hopefully will change to the better.
That would be nice. Now, what about the school?
Oh, them, yeah.
Yes. Where does that leave us?
So, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I was at the school committee meeting last night, they certified a new budget. And that is reflected in the spreadsheet that I gave you tonight. So for Townsend, it comes in at nine-point-six million dollars. The budget that was certified last night was two-point, I think it's two-point-four-eight above last year. But the way that the school funding formula works, it results in an increase for Townsend of six-point-eight percent. And so that's, comes out to just about six-hundred-and-thirteen thousand over what, over what our assessment was in the current fiscal year. And to touch on Carolyn's question from earlier about the comparison of year over year, so our total, total budget is eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand above fiscal fifteen. Of that, of that increase, five-forty-seven, roughly five-forty-seven-five is the schools, which is sixty-three percent, and about three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand is non-school stuff, so thirty-seven percent. And I'm always, I always want to be careful how we, how we talk about this and not make the schools the bad guys. There's arguably nothing more important than, than education that we do on the, in the government sector, especially at the local level. So it is, it is a necessary cost. It's, you know, obviously it's more than half of our budget, so it, fluctuations are felt much more dramatically. When the school, school assessment goes up two percent, we feel it a heck of a lot more than if the Conservation Commission budget went up two percent, so. So, but it leaves, what it, what it did was reduce our deficit by about two-hundred-thousand. So we're looking now at a deficit of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we'll be, we'll be trying to identify some, some savings in whether it's on the revenue side or the expenditure side over, over the coming weeks.
Sue?
Yes?
Can I have a recess, please?
Sure.
At least five, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Used to that stuff.
I turned a fan on.
Hi, we're back. Thanks. Okay, Carolyn, you had a question?
Yeah, and just on the school budget, was, did that include any type of other assessment in there? Just only because the number that I had for the school was, it would be nine-four-eight-nine-nine-one-nine, you just round, did you just round it up to ninety-six?
No, it came in at nine-point-six.
Okay, it could have just been a wrong number.
The...
Where did you get that one?
Actually, I got it from the article today, that was in the paper.
Oh, I think that the number that was in the article didn't include the debt, I think.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, you passed the assessment on top of it.
So it turns, it comes out...
I bought that when I saw it too.
Yeah, so...
But you're gonna be, you're gonna be pulling that from capital stabilization though, right? So that's gonna be offset in our budget, so it's not gonna be as...
Right, so the, so the transportation, there's three, three components of the school budget.
Yeah.
Transportation, operations, and debt. So transportation and operation, they lump together. That's nine-million-four-eighty-nine-nine-nineteen. And then the debt doesn't change. The debt is one-hundred-and-ten-two-fifty-three.
Okay. So how does that work? I mean, if, why do we put it all on the same line then? We offset it later? It just becomes misleading when we do that, that's all.
In terms of which part of it?
Well, if we look at the North Middlesex assessment line, okay? It's nine-point-six.
Yep.
And then the debt is, part is taken off...
Correct, to show, on the, on the budget that's presented to town meeting. And this always gets a little confusing.
I know.
This spreadsheet is not what actually goes to town meeting. So the one that goes to town meeting shows a more concise breakdown of department budgets and then offsets for certain things like transfers out of fire EMS ambulance receipts and things like that.
We did that. This is just one that I, that I have, that I keep updating.
That's okay.
I apologize. I was just showing her actually exactly what you were saying, Andy, how you break it out by the transportation and the debt, and you offset the amount from capital.
Yeah, that's the only thing, because if you, if, but if you look at the whole thing, it still is going up by six-point-eight percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And Neshoba came down?
Neshoba came down because of a declining enrollment for Townsend.
So that's kind of helping us with the total education.
Correct, correct. And I don't know how long that will last. We lost almost ten percent this year in Neshoba. We had a fairly sizable graduating class in, or that will graduate next month, and then a smaller freshman class coming in, so that may change next year.
Yeah. Andy, did that, did that number for Neshoba include the school roof, the roof assessment? Did we get assessed for that this year?
I think there was a component for that.
Twenty-two thousand or something? You don't have to look for it, we'll see it broken out on the...
Yeah, we didn't get the formal assessment, I don't think we got the formal assessment yet.
Just what I sent you.
Yeah, there's a twenty-two thousand dollar capital item in there.
That's included in that number.
So when we're looking at the operating budget, let me rephrase that. Right now, we're looking at the operating budget, and we have a deficit of two-hundred-and-fifty. How do we get to not having a deficit?
I was afraid you might ask, so. It is a, and I don't mean to make light of it.
Because I don't think that we're allowed to have a deficit like the state is.
You're, you're not allowed to close the year with a deficit. You can actually go to town meeting with an unbalanced budget, which...
Oh, that is gold.
Yeah, that goes for all.
Not recommending it, I'm just saying you, you can do it. And it's, and it's becoming, I was talking with Terry Walsh the other day about a town that I'm very familiar with that did that last year, knowing that they could close the gap in the fall, and it, and it worked. I don't know if they're, I haven't heard if they're doing it again. And in their case, it's a much larger budget. In their case, I think it was maybe a million dollars out of balance at town meeting, something like that. But it's probably a hundred-million-dollar budget, so it's five times the size of us. You know, frankly, if we were twenty, thirty, forty thousand out of balance at town meeting, I probably wouldn't lose sleep over it, but at that amount, there are ways to plug it if you want, if you want to go with a balanced budget. So in terms of where we go, I think that's, you know, I, it's not as bad a situation as we faced three years ago, when we had the, when the override in Townsend failed and it was approved in the other two towns and we still had to honor the funding. But it is not an insubstantial deficit to try to close. I'll be, I'll be spending some additional time going through, at the board's direction, going through the budget, department by department, trying to identify things that we can, that we can eliminate. We'll take a second look at revenues. There may be, there may be things that we look at with revenues that we didn't, we didn't look as closely at before.
That's not gonna change that much.
No.
I mean, you'll have a few more updated numbers.
Yeah. It's, and I wouldn't want to rely solely on one, on one item, you know, on one, one change, you know? I wouldn't want to rely just on... You know, I wouldn't want to rely just on, on a more aggressive revenue number. But, you know, so we'll look there, we'll look at expenditures. You know, we've shot most of our bullets over the years, so we don't have a lot of bullets left. One thing I will mention, and I'm not recommending it tonight, but it is something I think that needs to be considered. We put $200,000 into stabilization back in January. We have a million two, I think. It's a million two now in stabilization, which is a very robust...
In the savings account.
In the savings account, a million two seventy-eight, which is a very robust amount for a budget of our size. Part of the reason you have a stabilization account, obviously, it's good for the rating agencies. They look at that and they want to know that you've got, that you've got a cushion for the emergencies.
What do they usually look at for a percentage?
Minimum five.
And what do we have?
And we're at six and a half, I think, right now.
So, that's healthy.
So, that's healthy. One of the reasons that you have a rainy day account or stabilization account is to tap it, use it carefully, conscientiously as, and if it's needed. This may be one of those times where it's needed. We've never complained when the state has held local aid harmless by using rainy day, by using their rainy day account. The school department used $300,000 of their E and D, which is their stabilization account, in order to lessen the assessments of the community. So, stabilization is one of the areas that I'm going to be looking at. Again, I'm not going to come back to you in, whenever we meet again, and say, "Yeah, we're just going to take it out of stabilization. We'll cover it that way." That would be too heavy a reliance, but it may be part of the, part of the menu that I bring forth.
Yeah, I don't know how I'd feel about that.
And again, I'm not anxious to do it that way.
Especially with, you know, there's a lot more unknowns coming down the road, too, okay? Or, let's put it this way, there are a lot more knowns coming down the road.
Right.
So, I'm not sure.
The one thing that, the one thing to keep in mind, we've talked a lot about health insurance, employee health insurance, over the last six months or so. If you can identify something that you can glean a savings from in the future, in the near-term future, something like savings, like health insurance, rather, then it sort of takes the sting out of doing something like using free cash or stabilization as a bridge. And that's what it is. It's just a bridge to get you to a better place.
So, you're saying, come up with something to give us a little bit more revenue?
A little low, so in the near-term...
To make up for what we borrowed from our savings account.
Yeah, so in the near-term, you're using your reserves as a bridge. And then, in the, for the future, so that you lower your expenditures going forward, you look at something like health insurance where you can say, "We think we can make some savings there and back out of that reserve, that use of reserves." It's just one example.
Health insurance in terms of like a buyback?
Health insurance, well, you could do it as, you could do opt-out bonuses where you pay people to come off. It could be a restructured plan design, so it's a little bit, you know, it's more, it's a lower premium in return for higher copays and things like that, or slightly less robust plan.
Businesses do that all the time.
Correct, correct. It's a cumbersome process in the public sector with four unions and the personnel rules that govern us. So, it's not easy, otherwise, it would have been done, but it is, it is something, you know, that we may want to look at. I've had a number of conversations with Mark Andrews, my counterpart over in Pepperell, with Joan Landers and without Joan. And one of the things that has come out of all this school budget talk is an even, is an effort towards even better cooperation and working together to try to find ways that we can save, provide the services that we need to provide, but do so in a less costly manner. So, I'm hopeful that we'll find some things. I can't tell you what those, you know, if they're going to be worth 50,000 or 500,000. But I'm hopeful that with the players that we have in place now, Joan has been a blessing to work with. She's a blast to work with. And Mark has fit in very nicely and the three of us have a nice working relationship. So, we're hopeful that we can, that we can find some ways to streamline our operations and have some savings in the future. We're looking at everything from tying green communities to the schools to, you know, other kinds of shared services, so. We won't have any of it by May 5th, but I think there are some opportunities for the future.
Well, that's encouraging.
So, I guess in the short term, if there's anything glaring that the board would like to point me in the direction of, and welcome it. If you want me to just go through it and identify stuff and bring it back, I can do that as well.
Colin?
I mean, we're, you know, everything's coming together a bit. You know, we have more, some more concrete numbers. I think that, you know, of course, we'd want to hear Andy's recommendation as to potential cuts or the direction to go to, but in the meantime, we're going to be looking at this, too, and the FinCom is going to be looking at it, so.
Carolyn? We've been at this situation many, many times.
I know.
And what we've done in the past, just something to think about, is we level-funded or level-serviced at the annual town meeting. And when our free cash number came in the fall, then that's when there raises. We went back to town meeting and it raises. I'd be more comfortable doing something like that than pulling it out of stabilization.
But even if we did that, I mean, how much money are we talking about? Two and a half percent of all the salary account?
And I don't, I haven't looked at how much there is for expenditure increases, but...
There's a couple, like, for instance...
Obviously, we can't do contractual.
Picking, not picking on the library, but like, these people are working these hours and they're not being paid for them. So, that's something that, you know, we have to take into account if we decide to go in that direction.
But just to see what it would total up to, and I don't know what it would total up to. I'd have to look at last year's appropriations.
You know what I'm saying? You'd almost have to add up all of the salary.
Yeah, and I don't know what that is off the top of my head.
And figure that out as a total.
So, just, we'll look at it individually and the FinCom, of course, will look at it.
I mean, I, you know, I think we've all looked at the budget. We all know what it looks like and, you know, squeezing the balloon isn't going to work.
Which is why, you know, we're, I'm saying is that...
Yeah, let's just go forward.
Let's listen to Andy's recommendation and see what the FinCom has to say and that sort of thing.
I'd like the board to talk about our schedule here and what, I mean, we were scheduled for what? Two weeks from today for a meeting?
Yeah, which is the 21st, which is two weeks before town meeting. We are getting kind of into crunch time.
Do we need another meeting in between?
I think we do.
Just for budget?
Yes. And nothing else.
I think I can make it next Tuesday.
I never, I always leave Tuesdays open, so, and it's like a pleasant surprise if I don't have a meeting.
And I should have left every Tuesday open with budget season coming up. I'll figure it out. I'll make it.
If we have to meet on like a Monday or something, I can do that, too.
Tuesday's not candidate night, is it?
No, Monday is.
Monday, okay.
So, the only day I'm, the only days I'm not flexible are Wednesdays and Fridays.
I'll try to keep Fridays free for you.
So, shall we say that...
Fourteenth?
Yeah, the fourteenth. Budget only, guys?
That's fine. Do you have your recommendations by then?
I know, that's what I was thinking.
Uh, that's a good question. I will, I'll do the best I can and email them out to you. I don't know that I'll have them by the end of the week, but I'll try to work on it between now and the weekend.
We can call it a work session and we can work through it if you've...
It may take more than...
It's got some highlights and stuff.
It may take more than one session, you know, to do it, but I would suggest next Tuesday, the fourteenth.
Aye.
Regular time, 6:00 PM?
That's fine.
Televised or not?
It's budget and I, I mean, if Hartley can make it...
Is this next Tuesday?
Yes.
I think so. I'll check my calendar, but I think I can.
Okay. It's just that I think the public should hear the discussions that are taking place, you know, and our employees, you know?
Yeah. The only other, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut in.
That's okay.
The only...
I was just sighing.
I get that a lot. We can do the warrant tonight or you can do that next week, the town meeting warrant.
Can we please do it next week?
Okay.
It's, we're getting close to three hours, so, since we are going to be meeting next week and they kind of, they relate to each other.
Yeah.
If you squint.
Okay. Where are we at?
We're done.
My keeper.
Yeah, we've pretty much touched on everything. We talked about capital.
Okay. Five, one, review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants.
Chair, I would move that we review, sign the payroll and bills payable warrant out of session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to adjourn at 8:41.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.